Okay. Apologies for our late beginning. If the Peanut Gallery would cease its conversation and come up here. I think we're okay. The microphone's working. Okay, fine, all right. First question is whether, if we speak from the microphone, if everyone in the room can hear. Can you hear what I'm saying with the microphone? Is that okay? And then we'll all agree to come up and use the microphone when you're speaking, which hopefully many people will do. Okay, then I would like to call this session, this public hearing, to start with apologies that it's beginning a little bit late. But I can guarantee the couple of minutes we just spent will shorten the time at the next meeting. So this is a public hearing on Monday, July 16th, 2018. We have here several council members, and we usually proceed by certain rules, which I won't belabor. It basically speaks to order and compliance with good decorum and reasoned conversation without personal attacks. And our role is not to debate with anyone who's speaking, but to permit certainly questions of anyone who wishes to speak on any of the subjects. And then there are certain times when we also admit comments on other subjects, if time permits, and someone has a concern, we should consider, in addition to what's on the formal agenda. So having said all that, I introduce first here Shelley Jackson, works on the city council staff. I'm Larry Deutsch, one of the council members. There's John Gale, council member, Lendlin Hall things. TJ Clark II is here, and Town and City Clerk John Pizano. In general, we have sign-up sheets, and the first item to be spoken of is item number one, an ordinance amending Chapter Two, Article Eight of the municipal code be amended by adding a new section that creates a Hartford Commission on Criminal Justice Reform. This is the contribution made initially by Councilman Clark, and it's been discussed to some extent, and printed, of course. And so in regard to this creating a Hartford Commission on Criminal Justice Reform, are there any comments? Usually we ask for those speaking in favor and those opposed, and in favor and opposed. So is there anyone who would like to speak in favor of this ordinance? Well... Oh.
Yeah, my name is Michael Downs, 74 Rosemont Street in Hartford. Creating a Hartford Commission on Criminal Justice Reform. As long, I guess, as this doesn't take a lot of money, to create this commission, it certainly is beneficial to continue to review the criminal justice system as it exists in the city, review the laws, that is, the statutes and ordinances, especially the ordinances, because the city council has control over that. The state and federal government would have control over the statutes, and the rules and regulations based on the laws that were created. And some of those rules and regulations may need to be changed. Maybe they're not in accordance with the ordinance as they were set up, or the ordinance changed, and they need to be changed in the rules and regulations. Then, of course, the procedures and proceedings, procedures and processes of doing business based on the rules and regulations. Sometimes everything seems to be in order, but the way people do business, the way they've established procedures of certain departments need to be revamped or changed. So I think that as long as this is not a high finance item, that this certainly would be beneficial to the city to have a Hartford Commission on Criminal Justice Reform. Thank you.
Any questions?
Mr. Downs, I have a question. I wonder if I may ask you.
Yes.
Now, you and I, all of us, have been around for a while, and not too long ago, the Supreme Court rendered some opinions about juvenile justice issues and judgments among juveniles. Do you feel that those concepts are among the reasons that this commission has been proposed to update the regulations and the laws regarding juvenile justice? And of course, we have an attorney here on this council, and all of us have some role. Do you think that this will help incorporate Supreme Court decisions regarding judgment among young people?
Why, sure. When talking about criminal justice, there's criminal justice for youths, criminal justice for children, and criminal justice for adults. And certainly, criminal justice for children and youths requires a more, it's a more delicate area of the law, and so requires, will require a constant review, constant review. Because, I mean, we've gone from where it was okay to execute children for committing certain crimes, to where, well, of course, we can't execute someone who committed a crime, a certain crime, when they were a child. And there's other procedures and rules and regulations that could be established based on the law, the case law that was established by the Supreme Court. And sometimes, in fact, that's a case in point, that recent rules, recent case law, these aren't statutes and ordinances, this is case law as well, I forgot that. In case law, you have to establish rules and regulations based on this law, and you have to continually look at them, because each individual department establishes procedures or processes of doing business based on the rules and regulations, which are based on the ordinances or the statutes or the case law. And they have to continually reviewed for accuracy and for being up to date and being fair, fairness. Fairness is probably the biggest thing that this criminal justice commission would be looking into.
Okay, thank you very much. Any other questions? All right, now, does anyone wish to speak in opposition to this proposed ordinance? Interesting, I see some signatures here on both sides. That's a very balanced view, isn't it?
Leslie Hammond, One Linden Place. And yeah, I do want to speak against it and for it. The reason I'm against it is because I recently have been doing research on our commissions, and I just feel like it's a really dysfunctional system. And I'm very concerned about us having another commission that's dysfunctional. If TJ is actually going to be in charge of it and be able to make it run efficiently, that is awesome. I still am not sure how it all works, because I feel like the mayor does have a lot of power over these commissions. And there's many that have people where their commission has expired. They sit there. One gal told me the other day that it took her a minute to get on the cultural affairs of commission, and it took her a year to get on the women's commission. And we know the police review board went through all kinds of nonsense. I'm not sure if that's been meeting regularly or not. So I just, that's why I'm kind of divided about it, because I certainly await to speak for it, but I just feel like we really need to do a lot of work around the whole way. We were saying Joanne Barr came up with this idea. You're gonna love this. Maybe we need to have a commission to run the commissions, because really, it's pretty dysfunctional if you take a look at it. Thanks.
Thank you. Questions? All right. Would anyone now like to speak in favor of this? All right.
I must be a Libra or something. Leslie Hammond, One Linden Place. You know, anybody that's paid attention to national, state, and local matters. We all know that non-white people in particular have been, you know, totally discriminated against with our criminal justice system. And as I told you all in the past, I'm in recovery. I see a lot of people that have alcohol and drug problems, totally turn their life around, and they probably ended up in jail because of alcohol and drugs, or worse yet, when they were a child, 14, 15, 16, they stole a car, and then they were in the system. And then all of a sudden, the police are like paying attention to them. And you guys know the stories better than I do. And that has hurt so many people. I don't care if we have a second chance deal in the state. We know it's not working. People that have a record, have a really hard time getting housing, getting jobs. You know, it's really despicable what we have done to people. And a lot of it is over small things. It's one thing if somebody kills something, someone, or if something's very serious, but when it's like marijuana or, you know, a one-shot deal or something they did as a child, you know, we definitely need to pay attention to this. So I'm strongly for it. Again, if it can be done right, I think we really need to pay attention, because who knows how many people in our city are not being empowered and getting back on their feet just because of, you know, stupid stuff that's, you know, where they got arrested for all the wrong reasons. And mainly, I feel like the cops have people on the radar, and that's not good. And we know that's probably true.
All right, thank you so much. Now, let's see, would anyone like to speak in favor of it? No? She was in favor, and then she was opposed. Now in favor. Okay, whatever. All right. Would anyone like to speak in opposition to it? Yeah, you're right, you're right. Opposition? Yeah, thank you.
Good evening, Council. Alyssa Peterson, Grandview Terrace. My concern with another commission is that this city doesn't do commissions well, several of them. Some of them are done extremely well here in this city. But overall, I know the commission, several commissions feel ignored. They don't meet regularly, they don't have regular appointments, they're not staffed well, et cetera. I just don't think, right now, that you need another commission. What I would like instead is, I would like you to exert your executive oversight over that office in the corner and come up with three or four action items. We did have a paid person, Diane Jones, I believe, was the paid person that was doing some reentry issues. I know we've got a new reentry entity coming in to be housed here in City Hall. But this is a function that the mayor's office could play. They could work with nonprofits, they could work with the Hartford Foundation for, you know, getting funds, they could seek other funds, federal funds, or whatever. But first and foremost, this was something on our mayor's platform, and he hasn't done the job. So I'd like to you to go back first and see what the mayor's office can do as regards this first, then possibly have your commission. Secondarily, we were speaking earlier, so much of this stuff was done. I'm old. So much of this stuff was done 20 and 30 years ago with Mayor Mike's Public Safety Commission. I was on that, or committee, I was on that with 30 or 40 other people way back when. And the stuff that came out of that commission was fantastic, including the Community Court Initiative. There was the prostitute, it was like a prostitute program. There was the community court, there was the social worker at community court. So much of that came out of prior efforts, and it's gone now. And I don't understand that. So I think you need to circle back and find out, what does the city have for initiatives? What were we supposed to have? And what was the state supposed to have over at community court? If those initiatives are gone, no wonder there's a problem. But before you get involved with studying it here, find out what hap- I just hate how Hartford reinvents the wheel with every new administration. You folks, as a council, have not held this administration accountable, and it's time that you did. You have one more year yourselves. I like so many of you, but we know what happened to the last council. They got wiped out. I'd like to see so many of you succeed. It's time for you to exert your influence and come together as a council. And again, just three pointers. Regroup, see what needs to be done, see what's not being done anymore first. Thank you very much for listening.
Thank you. Questions? All right, now, is there anyone in favor like to speak? Anyone opposed? Anyone else in favor to speak? Anyone opposed? All right, so...
I don't mean to be in favor and then against, but Alyssa brought up a good point. Has the past history on criminal justice in this city and the study and the establishment of committees and commissions, has it been reviewed, and have people looked at it? And I just want to know if, as the, if the committee that looked at this, the Quality of Life and Public Safety Committee, if they've already looked at this, well, I guess maybe they should, could issue a report on it as to why they feel that it's beneficial to have a criminal justice commission. Or it may not be beneficial. Maybe she, there may be some part of the history, maybe, that we missed that we should look at. And we definitely don't want to have a, set up a commission that, in the end, does nothing, doesn't meet very often, is not very effective. Against it, I would be against it that way. I'd be for it if it's an effective commission. Thank you.
Well, I speak for a moment. We appreciate the comments, and perhaps either now or later, you'd like to speak with Councilmember Clark, who wrote this, and you could exchange views and pick his mind. It sounds a little silent, unusually tonight, but maybe you can have the conversation of that kind. You know, if not at a public hearing, then at some time before the final vote. That's my suggestion, and I don't know if he or others are interested in it, but it's certainly good points being made. So here, it's not... All right, well, if no one else has additional comments in favor and opposition, then we declare this item addressed. And there's a second item on tonight's agenda, which is amending Chapter Two, Article Eight, Section 250, the residency requirement of the municipal code. And there's a proposal to modify the current residency code, which I imagine you have in your hands, I hope. And again, the writer of that is here. I don't know if he wants to answer certain questions or make certain comments, but we have that opportunity. So is there anyone who wishes to speak in favor of this ordinance amending the residency requirement?
Good evening, Council. Thank you for being here tonight. It's rather warm.
Would you mind, would you mind, for public benefit, reminding us of your well-known name and...
Of course, of my residency. How can I not give that on this topic? 77 Wadsworth Street, Hartford, Connecticut. So I came before you before and rattled off, you know, how I feel about it. And I won't go into all of the things that you heard me speak on before. I think you know where I stand on this position. But what I will add to the public record was that I had an opportunity to do a little background research on this, and it wasn't scientific. I talked to our sister-city council member in Springfield to find out how they handled residency. So it could be anecdotal at best, but as a sister-city, you know, demographics being similar, population, that sort of thing, they do residency, and it's a much stronger policy, too. Like, they don't just hold council appointees and even mayoral department heads to the residency requirement. They actually go further, and they have negotiated with some unions. It's not just like police and fire, but they've extended it even to, like, all city employees. Now, we are not approaching, even going, as far as they go. One other thing that they do, like, as far as enforcement of this, I know what we're saying here in this ordinance is that human resources would be responsible for it, but they have a residency task force with human resources staff on it, but the police department is on that task force, too. So they really have a strong enforcement on residency, and it's working. So again, it's not something that we need to feel as though it's not a benefit to the city or it's going to disempower the city in any way. It's, they see it as an asset, and I think we should see it as an asset, too. I would like to be in a place where we're not having this conversation anymore about residency, like, it's good policy. Good policy is, how is it, how is it making the lives of the residents better? How does residency make the lives of the citizens in Hartford better? Well, it puts the people responsible for implementing policy on the ground, living out those policies with everybody else. That's good policy when your department heads have to interact with and come across and live out the same circumstances as the residents in which these policies are created to make our lives better, to make our quality of life in the city of Hartford better. And if we're not holding our department heads to that same standard, or... And trust me, we know people who live, who have worked for the city, let me say that, who have worked for the city. We love them, they come in, they work hard, they've worked for the city forever. And that's one thing that you hear, where they're committed. There's still a conflict there, though. There's a point in which your commitment divests from actual city of Hartford. Once you go home, once you drive away in your car and you go home to another town, there's a divestment of interest. And that's a fact. I'm sorry. It's just true. You can love the city, you can love the people that you are serving, but at some point, and it's at 5:00, when you drive away, your interests divides, and you go and you take care of the things that really matter to you, which is the city that you live in. And there's nothing wrong with that. You should care about the city that you live in and want to invest and see it flourish. Why wouldn't we want that for people who are implementing policies for the residents? There's an economic benefit, obviously, to it, too, when people getting paid pretty nice salaries also have to register their cars in the city and pay taxes in the city, but support the things in the city as well. There's a jazz festival going on in Bushnell Park, you know, like, right around the corner right now. How many employees of the city who are not, like, trying to get out of here at 5:00, you know, actually are spending time in the city also, investing all of their dollars and their time and interest in the city? So that's my spiel. I really, this matters to me a lot. For all of the other reasons that I laid out to you before, I think when we, it's a statement that we're making when we say residency matters. So it's a mindset, it's an attitude that you bring to this conversation. And that's all I'm saying, is that it should matter to us. Last point, when I spoke here before, I had some people who brought some other things to my attention about, you know, well, maybe you can't sell your house, maybe you're upside down on your house. When you are in the process for a job, you have to weigh a lot of different factors. You have to weigh all of those out. If I was looking right now for another opportunity in another town, I have to weigh the cost about, do I want to uproot my children? Do I want to, you know, you think about all those, you count the costs. If somebody wants to come and work here, they count the cost. If you are upside down on your house, that is your issue that you have to work through, but the job requires you to live in the city with a bona fide address, not a P.O. box, not a town club address, but an actual address. And if that means you have to carry two homes, I don't, I don't know what that's going to mean for you, but you weigh that out. You weigh, you count the cost, and you make your determination. I know I said that was it, but one last thing. I went to enroll my children into some summer program, and I was asked to provide my federal tax returns as proof of residency, just to enroll my children into a summer program. They wanted to see my tax returns. And I was like, wow, you know, that's a lot of personal information on there. So of course, I redacted, like, a lot of info. It's like, you're not seeing all of that. But the point was, they see that as like a bona fide way to verify your residency. Like, that's a summer program. So I am supportive of residency. I think we could be much, much stronger. I think, you know, we should not be apologetic. We should be absolutely unapologetic, carry ourselves that way, and it will resonate through everybody throughout the city of Hartford. That's the kind of statement that this makes. I'll get off my soapbox now, thank you very much.
Yeah.
A state. Question? Question?
Yeah, highlights in one state. You know, thank you for coming out, and ditto on all the things that you said. And as we're going through this ordinance, I agree. If you're not willing to relocate, then don't apply. That's the first thing. The second thing is that, and I've said it before, it's not a draft. You're not mandated to come to Hartford to apply for a job in Hartford. But it is a requirement that you reside here. And one of the things that I'm going to be looking to forward is that some of our, and these are our highest-paid employees, so it is an economic issue for us and our residents. But one of the things that I'm going to be looking at further is that we have individuals who, and I'm going to ask your opinion about this, why I'm bringing it up, individuals who own a home where they pay taxes somewhere else, and then they have an apartment, you know, here in the city of Hartford. So as you're thinking about residency and economic, you know, disadvantages to the city of Hartford, just your personal feel about, you know, individuals who would do that if they're like fraudulent on their application, when it says you must reside, but then you have multiple addresses, where you own one and you rent a shelter in Hartford?
Yeah, I think that's where the federal tax return comes in, right? Like, that is a strong indicator as to where you actually live. Because you could do that, right? You could have a home here, but because you want the job, I could, I could rent, like, on that salary of a department head. In theory, I could manage, too, maybe. Like, if I had it like that, I could manage in another apartment, but not really live there. That's possible, but I think the federal tax return would indicate, would be a stronger way to indicate where you do actually reside. Again, Springfield has a task force. Like, you're talking about, we're talking about commissions and things, but they have a task force for residency. And I think by having the police department joined with the human resources office, they do a little investigative work. I don't exactly know how it works, but they do a little investigative work to just see, like, do you really live where you live? And I don't think they go out hunting for people. But when things are brought to their attention, like, you know, I wouldn't call it snitching, but when things are brought to their attention, they have investigatory powers to go and find out, like, where people actually reside. And there's a way that you could somewhat determine that.
Thank you, but honesty is important. And if you're fraudulent, then that's a violation of the law.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
I'd like to ask you another question. As a thinking person or anyone who's here, can you think of or suggest any middle ground in case some individuals quarrel with or are reluctant to use the word requirement? In other words, some will approach it by incentives, copayments on a mortgage, or some kind of gradation in salary, depending if one is a resident or not? Is there any other middle ground or compromise you might suggest in case there's diversity of opinion on it?
The only middle ground I would suggest or could think of would be open communication, right? So what I mean by that is, you don't live in Hartford when you take the job, but you understand that is a job requirement, you have six months, things don't work out. Open communication, like, we are talking this through, not waiting until, like, six months and then, oops, I can't find it. Let's see if we could stick it under the rug and nobody notices. Like, let's keep it an honest- Like, let's keep it an honest and open conversation. Things aren't working out, sorry, but residency is a requirement. We're going to have to replace you. Like, that's the only middle ground I see. Like, open, let's be open and honest about it. Maybe if we were having more transparent conversations about it midway through that six-month period, let's check in and see how you're coming along. Maybe there are other things that we could support you on as far as like getting you into the City of Hartford, other avenues we can explore within that six-month timeframe, but that's the middle ground. It's like you have a time limit in order to move into the city.
All right, thank you. Now, are there any who wish to speak in opposition to this ordinance proposal? Any additional in favor?
Leslie Hammond, One Linden Place. I applaud everything Naisha said, and I really feel strongly about it, too. What really upsets me, I feel like we have such low self-esteem, like out of 125,000 people, we can't find anybody for these jobs. I mean, that is so pitiful. I just can't even stand it when we say it. And listening to you guys, I was thinking, we were just talking about salaries, and they are the bigger salary jobs. And the fact that some of these people I know have an apartment, I don't know how often they're really in that apartment. I mean, you know, it's more just, like, I just feel like people are playing a game with it. So I think you definitely have to do the tax return. You know, Sean Fitzpatrick, it was unfortunate. He was, you know, a great guy, but really, a room at a woman's club, that's like playing us. It makes us look like fools. So I just, I'm strongly in favor. The other thing I hear, somebody said this, like, oh, well, you can't sell a house and buy a house in six months. Hello, I'll help, you know, I'm a realtor. You know, that's ridiculous. So that's more B S excuses. So I really think that you guys, I'd love to see you take a stand on this and just like stop having it be so vague. And, you know, I don't know about the firemen, what I hear is that they get an apartment while they get through the initial part, and then they don't, they can give up the apartment. So what do they, just all pass around the same apartment? I mean, it's ridiculous, and everybody knows it. I mean, that's the thing, we're a laughing stock, but it's mainly when we say we can't find anybody. Like, out of all our people, we can't find anybody. I just don't believe it. So, go for it.
Oh, question.
Yeah, Leslie, I just want to say in full disclosure, you mentioned the Hartford Fire Department, they are the department with the highest hiring of Hartford residents.
Yeah, that they actually live...
That they actually live in Hartford, yes.
Yeah, great, because those are good salaries. I mean, that's the other thing, we talk a lot about salaries here. Every time anything comes up, we're trying to get salaries for people, and these are, these are big jobs, you know? So, but particularly the department heads. And I don't know where we're at with the acting public works, poor Chief Freeman that's doing everything all the time, and he has little kids. Is that like a residency problem? Is that why we don't have a new public works person, or is that something else? I don't know, but I'd love to see us do it.
Okay, thank you. All right, that exhausts the list of those who wanted to speak in favor, and there's no one who's speaking in opposition, at least not on this list. Is there anyone else that has a comment on either side?
Alyssa Peterson, Granby Terrace. Councilman George, if you could look, I think I put in favor, did I not?
Well, not on this piece of paper, but it's all right. Maybe it's in invisible ink on here, but yes...
All right, I'll ask our clerk afterwards, our city clerk. I fully support doing something, okay? This is the kind of thing that I want to see this council do, something. I love it when you folks take initiative, when you set different policy, when you reaffirm policy. It's so important for you to do things that are reaffirming or corrective. That is your role as executives, as executive oversight. The points that I'm concerned about here is, and because there've been a couple court cases, I like the idea of the tax return. I know other council people did not. I know two council people had expressed concerns, one who's no longer on council, possibly because their tax return showed that they had a house in Windsor that they were taking a mortgage deduction on, I don't know. Another person may have another mortgage issue on their tax return or whatever, but I didn't have a problem with the tax return, because as Naisha said, there are other entities that ask for that information. If that's not possible, if that's not agreeable, you need to agree on something. The problem is, what is that something? And what I see here is, I don't see that it's going to be enough. And that's, so I put, I support it with changes. And, you know, Councilman Gail's the attorney here, he knows some of the cases, he knows some of the election law that's been looked at and whatnot. Let's go through some of the examples. Does anybody think, you know, city, the mayor's staff lives here or makes their primary residence? No, but I'd hate to lose several of them. It's sad that several of them have contracts at certain residences here in Hartford. I guess they're paying a rent there, but they also live in Bloomfield, they live in, and I'm not going to name names, if you'd like me to, I'll go through the list. But I think that right now, if you did do a check, they would all fail, and we would look foolish, just like we looked foolish with Sean Fitzpatrick. It's unfortunate. If we can't get the talent, that's a problem. I'm very interested in what Springfield does. How does Springfield do it and get the talent that they need? Maybe you start with certain positions, fire, public works, you know, let's face it, during the winter, I think I'd like to know that my public works director was here in town. Fire, police, public works, the mayor's executive staff, chief of staff. Melissa, you know, she's such a talent, I don't want to comment on her residency, but, you know, I'd hate to lose her because someone checked on her, okay? But that's just a personal like, because she's so competent. I just think you need to set a bar and say, all right, these top five positions in the mayor's office are residents. These department heads, they are residents. Police, fire, certain positions, they are residents. Otherwise, I don't know how we're going to attract the best and brightest for some of our positions. So I think along with this establishment or these changes, you know, I can, how many, I think the problem you have right now is, if you institute this, are you then going to turn around and check on it? We have residency affidavits. Those affidavits, the way they're written, are not written like this. The resident, there's 45 residency affidavits that are required to be filled out and submitted to the Audit Commission every year. And if we did that now with these new, these new standards, everybody would fail, because we'd have to send Human Resources out to really check where they live. So I just don't know if you're prepared to take that next step, if you put it here. Maybe if it was just, again, establishing a baseline of certain positions. So I support the resolution, but I, or the ordinance, I think it needs more work in terms of definition. It's a, I hate to be wishy-washy on this, but if you're going to put a policy in, make sure you can enforce it, because, please, right now, if you did this, top four or five people would be gone in the city right now, top executives right now. We'd be another laughing stock, like Sean. That was just embarrassing. We don't need more embarrassment. We need concrete plans and proposals that can be affirmed and adhered to and, you know, frankly, policed, I hate to see it. So, again, maybe Naisha's idea is also good. What does Springfield do? I know Meriden has some requirements also. Thank you, as always, for letting us speak.
Thank you.
My name is Michael Downs, I live at 74 Rosemont Street in Hartford, and I'm speaking in favor of this. I've spoken in favor of it before. The residency requirement should be very strict. People that live in the city should, people that work in the city should live in the city, and people that live in the city should be able to work in the city and get jobs in the city with the city. And the, there may be certain specialized jobs for, that city residents, there aren't any qualified city residents, maybe a certain public administration expertise, legal expertise, medical expertise, but even there, there are people that have that expertise, and if you're going to have the job, say, well, the job doesn't require residency, well, but the people that live in the city that apply for that job should get preference, some type of preference whether it's points, or whether it's just they should get general preference, because they happen to live in the city. Of course, you also want to get the most qualified person, or the best person with the qualifications. All commissions and committees should have people who live in the city. I can't, I can't imagine any, any commission or committee, I can't imagine, because they do have them in the city, but they, these commissions, they should require all people, all members be residents of the City of Hartford. And the, also, on the implementation of a law like this, I agree, that we should, we should be checking other towns. What do other towns do? And there may be several different ways other towns do it. Let's see if we can, you know, get an amalgamation of what they do, or some towns do it better than others, use their procedures. If Springfield or Meriden does it, well, let's go study it. But it's still, it's something that we have to have. And it's, to have people who live in a city, who have, work in certain jobs in the city, live in the city, it's an investment. It's an investment for that person, and it's an investment for the city. And well, there's two, on the tax rolls, the taxes, I suppose you can check a person's income tax, where they get their income tax, and see what they're, what they're getting their deductions on. But I think more importantly, it's the tax roll. What's in the City of Hartford? Who pays taxes in the City of Hartford? I mean, I pay taxes at 74 Rosemont Street. I reside at 74 Rosemont Street. But people should be paying, at least, they should be paying taxes on the properties that they're in, that they own, and their automobiles should be registered in the city. And many times, we just, a simple thing like automobile registration, we don't bother checking it. They really should have their automobile registered here and not up in Massachusetts somewhere, because they get cheaper, they get cheaper insurance. It should be right here in Hartford. And they say, well, the taxes are high in Hartford. Well, they're not any higher here than they are in any of the surrounding towns. In fact, they're more in the surrounding towns. And also, one thing we could do to encourage people to move into the city is to give them help with the mortgage, the mortgage percentage, also with down payments. There's different things that can be done along those lines. And the, the, the state, of course, we should be checking state tax, federal regulation and the auto registrations, but still, the bottom line is, as many people as possible should be living in the city. And what we should do is say, everyone must live in the city, and then maybe have certain exceptions for certain jobs, but only make the, that, even if a person is an exception, the exception must be an exception. Thank you.
All right, very good, thank you. All right, seeing no other individuals who wish to comment, let's declare the commentary on this proposed ordinance ended, and the meeting adjourned. Thank you all for coming or watching.